Twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting for at seven P M.
Again, Keschmerzky, White Oak Drive.
Eddie Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Anthony Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Eric Bowers, staff planner. And I will note that Linda Winslow is absent tonight and that is excused.
Move to the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from the previous meeting of October two thousand twenty-five.
Move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, October eight, twenty twenty-five.
Aye, second up.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Other comment right now from anyone before we move to new business? Other comment? None will move on to six A, new business. Site plan review, number one zero two 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 five dash one. Proposed thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two square foot retail development. Subject parcel tax ID is five two zero eight zero one seven zero one seven five zero. Located within the zone, the general business district. Appointments, Michael Parker. CPM Packard is LLC, thirty-nine, three, no landing. Repeat again.
Yep, so we have a complete application before you tonight for a site plan review. Um, this is can be seen as a kind of the next phase or an extension of past approvals. Forward here, so here is this site in question. Uh, the white building you see in the center, I don't think this this won't work on the screen, but the white building you see in the center is Texas Roadhouse. Um, and the proposal tonight is for or thir- that Jim said thirteen, about thirteen thousand square feet of retail space just to the north of this site. Um, on this picture, you can see kind of the four curb bump outs on the very north end of that parking lot. Um, so as I understand it, and uh, Mike and Brad can correct me if I'm wrong, Mike and Brad with the development team, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are no further parking lot construction needed. It's basically just the building and associated sidewalk and um, anything else. Uh, utilities are all already complete to that site in the north. Stormwater is complete through the uh, previous approvals with Texas Roadhouse and Panera. Um, so it is pretty, a- as I see it, a staff season, a pretty straightforward request tonight. This was previously approved uh, at the January twenty-five, twenty twenty-three meeting as part of the Texas Roadhouse site plan approval. Um, however, due to the ordinance requirement that for granted approvals that work commence within one year and then be complete within two. Um, that decision lapsed in January of this year. And so the development team is back before us tonight to seek approval again for that thirteen thousand square feet of retail space. Uh, the original proposal was for roughly twenty thousand, but obviously as plans get drilled down in the details, that obviously has changed uh, to be a slightly smaller footprint. Um, here's the zoning, right in the middle of the general business district. Uh, that you can plainly see parcel lines on this zoning map. I will note that they are, have been realigned since this zoning map was put into place. So you can, these pars- these parcel lines are correct as far as I know. Um, and you'll see that these are slightly different, but that is where the location is within, within that zoning district. Uh, here's the site plan, which is also uh, in your packet tonight. Um, you can see the existing restaurant B would be Texas Roadhouse. Existing restaurant A would be Panera. And then the retail space to the north. Top left hand side is just zoomed in on that, on that retail space specifically. And this one is in your packet, not in your packet proper, but it was attached, uh, attached.
What's the existing retail showroom? What is that?
That would be Fraco.
Fraco, that's right, that's right.
And here's just that partial site plan, a little bit bigger uh, for you to viewing. And then I think the only other slide would be an elevation on the bottom, just to give you an idea of uh, what it will look like when completed. Um, I really don't have anything else to add. Staff would recommend approval of this pending a few of the items as listed in your staff report. Uh, approval of items three D, disgrading drainage and stormwater. Uh, three E, utility services, three I, signs, and four, which would be the other factors, including the uh, pond amount. Um, all those, those four are very typical for any site plan uh, request. Uh, being that those are the ones that we deal with after the approval or decision, I should say. Um, so yeah, I don't do anything to add. Like I said, uh, Mike and Brad are here tonight and have any questions or given the other information you want, um, if you have to answer any questions.
Since we don't have a side view. Those vertical breaks come into play on the uh, you know, if it's over certain feet, we have to have some kind of a break in there on the side or in the back.
Uh, I suppose they would, I mean, depending on the, on the scale of the building. Um, and that is something that staff to address as we go through the process.
Or we could just ask them if you guys have any complaints or know for, is there anything in there on the side like that?
Well, there's vertical articulation on the sides through the use of different colors. Uh, there's no projections, as you see on the front of the building, on the sides, except where there are breaks uh, for doors and, and the light. Um, they're not adjoined, this building doesn't adjoin any other occupied property proximate to it. So whereas the ordinance, I think, was intended to take into the vertical and horizontal articulation to be in sympathy with other adjoining properties.
Mike, would you just identify yourself for the
Sure.
Just for the record, that's all.
Michael Contor, seventy-five sixty-three Noah's Landing, Graybridge. I'm the project developer. And also Brad Crimmins' ownership is here as well, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Mike, other than the uh, the fact that this is going to be a little bit smaller than it was originally, is there anything, anything different at all?
Just the size. If we, the, the project building um, architectural detail is very similar to what we've done on what we refer to as Shops of Marquette One, which is TJ Maxx, Olds, uh, Pet Smar, and Houston Sation. So it's an all masonry building. It has articulation with um, canopies, windows, as well as eaves and cornices. And this building will have the same thing. It'll be an all masonry building.
And then uh, maybe this is addressed to maybe Eric as well. Uh, so the, the staff recommendation for approval uh, contingent on submission of items three D, three E, three I, and four. Those are all just standard things that would be.
And to be honest, like I, sorry, like I was saying, uh, when you got utilities, I know sanitary is still needs to be dealt with, but I think water is already to the site.
Sanitary is as well.
Okay.
You, you, the lines are pulled.
Sure.
Sanitary, water, storm, P S. And we've set up with the electric company as well for a transformer when we're ready to go.
So a lot of that stuff that he just mentioned is stuff that we would get into the details on after the decision on the site plan, but a lot of it's already done. So I mean, we still have to address those items, uh, go through the proper processes, but I mean, the, including the stormwater, um, being that the, the detention pond is already there for the Texas Roadhouse and Panera development.
But it was designed with this in mind.
Yep.
Okay, so, but it's shared with the other?
Correct, yes.
Uh, assuming that the commission, the planning commission approves this, when would you uh, anticipate that you would start building?
Well, with the weather, we've been handled. But more than likely, May of next year.
Okay. Anything in the back going to be paved, or is it just gonna be?
No, um, there's nothing in the rear that will be paved. There'll be sidewalks on the side of the building as depicted on, on the plan itself. But the rear will just be all landscaped area, and then it gradually goes down to the detention pond area.
All the doggy grass behind her.
Correct.
So what's being proposed in there doesn't mean any loading docks or anything?
No, the, the type of retailers we're dealing with, small retailers really rarely need um, loading dock areas at all or even rear deliveries, because they get so much of their packaging these day through FedEx, UPS, and they just come to the front door.
Eric, I think I do remember like in January, we talked about um, what the circulation was gonna be there with the traffic and everything, and it seems like there was a whole range of.
Not that, not that we've been made aware of. Heard from the road commission either. Um, I do know, I'm concerned originally was that acceleration plan not being long enough coming out of the roundabout, but that roundabout to start with is just a little tricky with the people merging, going west and everything, so um, but no, we really haven't ever received any complaints, and I don't, as far as I know, really any major accidents in the area either, so.
So is the uh, drive-through lane for Panera? Is that going to be, when, when you're coming down that lane to go back behind there, or is that just gonna be like two lanes in there?
There, uh, Panera has two lanes behind its drive-through currently. Uh, one of which leads to a bypass lane that comes. If, if you don't mind, may I? So there are two, this is an express running along, and we have a cut through right here that allows cars to bypass and then move throughout the property in that manner. And then there's a dedicated drive-through or lane that goes all the way around.
Yeah, I, I can see that, but I'm talking about the one, the road going north, coming off of the highway. And yeah, uh, you know, right there where you're turning in to go to the pickup window? There's uh, only gonna be room for about three cars in there, or do you think that might get backed up in there?
We've not had any, probably on the opening day it was backed up. But after that first week of business, it's calmed down and I there's not been kind of excessive backup or stacking. Um, as you might see, there's a fair amount of stacking in that lane as it exists already. I think it's stacking for twelve cars. So we haven't really had, except again, in that opening week, any real backups on that main drive.
I think the, I interrupt the requirement for fast food, drive-throughs, stacking wise, is nine vehicles in the ordinance. And so if it's twelve, obviously exceeds that requirement, and I can attest to what Mike is saying. I mean, I go to Panera for lunch frequently. Um, and I usually order online before, so I think a lot of people are doing that too. They're just basically telling the speaker, I need to pick up an order, and they're driving around. So there's really not much stacking going on at all.
So you're talking about twelve from where the pickup window is all along to the back of the?
To this point.
You got twelve in there?
And the requirement is nine, so I mean, they're over that, over that requirement.
Right, but I'm just thinking about if, when you come up, when you order out of the pickup window, I think you can only like stack probably two or three cars in there on that road.
From the ordering point, there's probably room for five stacked cars at that point?
The ordering speaker is on the, it's kind of the northwest corner.
It is.
Yeah.
It's right at the very fast one. So it's one, two, three, four, five.
Is that double or single lane going in all the way back? You come in off of forty-one. Is that a double lane or single lane?
Single.
A single lane?
There's one here.
Yeah, so it goes all the way back.
It's one twenty-four, twenty-four foot wide driveline. And it's two-way. Um, so permits cars to flow in both directions.
I guess that's the issue to me is having that traffic kind of get backed up there. They can't get through to go back to the uh, retail shops. And have to wait for those cars to go through, or somebody's in that lane waiting to go into that drive-through lane. And it's gonna back up all the other traffic there.
Well, w- we've been on this site quite a bit um, over the last two years. And the only times we've really had uh, serious traffic limitations were those opening weeks for both Panera and Texas Roadhouse. Since then, traffic has modulated as you would expect. Um, and we've not heard complaints from any of the three tenants on property as it relates to traffic flow or parking considerations. And I can tell you that, I can attest that two of them, two of the tenants are, are it must, I must be on speed dial, because they call frequently if there is an issue.
And I will say too, I mean, there's plenty besides that one that lines up with the driveway off the highway or the, the cut off the highway are several other options. And hard right off of that, you've got several other lanes you can drive north to get to those retail spaces. Avoiding the Panera backup if there ever is.
If I may, this um, curb cut here, which leads into Gordon Food Service and serves who went on to Shops of Marquette, Lowe's, and Meyer, has created a fair amount of relief and easy traffic throughout. So even if, you know, someone missed this entry point here, people have come to realize that there's another opportunity to get into the property. Both move throughout all these retail enterprises without having to get on to forty-one again.
Yeah, they can go to the roundabout, it's a little bit safer. I know I do that by myself rather than pulling out. The only, I, I do agree with you, Jim, on that uh, coming in. And Eric, I don't think it's a, a great option to have anybody take a right and then go in, because then you're, you're definitely driving through a parking lot to get back to the other um, retailers. And you've got a lot of people walking versus a, a driveway that goes straight back like the one on the, the west side between Panera and Texas Roadhouse's parking lot there. Uh, I'm just surprised that that's not a two-way traffic there.
I see your point, but at the same time, that north-south right off the highway, that's, it's still a parking lot. I mean, there's people that are parking between Panera and Texas Roadhouse that are going across that driveway to get to Panera, walking in to eat in the restaurants, so it's.
Eric, can I ask a question? So, um, maybe I'm missing something here, but when this came before, I guess I must have been absent at that meeting. I don't think I was here when it was approved. But um, wasn't this whole site plan, including the traffic flow? Uh, the, the contemplation of these leased buildings in the back approved once by the planning commission? All right, so, I mean.
This actually shows two-way traffic here. The drawing that I'm looking at on the site plan, partial site plan. It shows two-way traffic between Panera and the parking.
Right, it does.
Yeah, so as long as it's two-way traffic going back there.
What I'm saying is if you're going north and you want to turn into Panera, and there's already five cars in there, you're gonna do. But I mean, Jim, if we've already approved this site plan.
We have to go.
I know, but if we would disapprove it now, I mean, on what basis would we disapprove it? Because the, the, the traffic flow for these buildings, and the, nothing's changed in terms of the traffic flow, has it?
No, and I would say in the three years that Panera has been open, there's been no backups or issues that, uh, stacking at all. So I mean, it's, it's moved smoothly even at the height of their hours in the morning and early afternoon.
So are those roles between the parking of those hundred and twelve parking spaces, is there room for two-way traffic in there?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Uh, a hundred and twelve spaces, new spaces you're gonna create, are those roles in between there? Is there enough room for two-way traffic in there?
Yes, this is two, all two-way traffic. Every single one of these driveways are two-way traffic, so the twenty-four feet of supply and permits two-way traffic. And this is a fairly traditional layout for a shopping center. Uh, you know, ninety-degree parking, they have that and function pretty easily um, at all times of year. So the only one way is right here.
Any other questions or comments? I guess I, I still do have a problem with that inclusion there with trying to get into the Panera. There's no other way, you could wind that so that there could be like a way to get around that traffic.
It's already existing. I mean, really, we're, all we're looking at is just the partial site plan, which right here. Cause the rest of it's existing, as seen here.
I think they were saying too, Jim, that if if there's cars right here and somebody came in and they wanted to turn, that's your, that's your issue, right? If, and they were sitting there waiting, another car could come in, but they could go a different route.
Right, yeah, but if you come down here and then somebody puts their blinker on because they wanna come in there, then that's gonna hold up all that traffic.
Well, it'll hold it up for one or two, and then come in and say, okay, I'll go this different route.
Yeah, I know, it's just, I think it would be better if you had another lane in there, but.
Probably the age-old scenario about there's never enough parking or room for everybody to get what they can build with the space they're on. As long as it's open now. It's open.
If I just might add, we have three years of history on it without any issue. I think also the way modern fast food restaurants operate, there are dedicated parking spaces for people who have ordered online and/or picking up where workers bring it out directly to them without them even having to go through the driveline. Drive-through lane, there is.
I could be wrong, there might not ever be a problem there, but I'm just kinda trying to look to the future just to.
I appreciate that.
Kinda looking out for, trying to avoid the traffic types in there.
And that's how I feel about the Starbucks one, when we don't have that rack excess, when they built the hosing. And we lose that, you know, that could cause some issues too, but at the same time. Yes, that's in the back of my mind too, that it's not easy for us.
Any comments, questions, motions, anyone?
Make a motion to approve the uh, the site plan as described in agenda item six A with the conditions that uh, the conditions mentioned in the staff approval recommendation uh, that items three D, three E, three I, and four be met.
Do we have to have that special motion?
We didn't find it necessary for this one, being that it's a little bit more uh, objective than a special lane use approval, so.
Okay.
We found this to be adequate.
I support that.
More discussion? Okay, I'm uh, I'm gonna have to vote no on this in this present form. I just think it's gonna create a problem. I could be wrong, hope I'm wrong, but I guess I just can't vote yes on this, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. You're the one. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Three E, C I P E discussion, one twenty-six. Moving now, Eric?
Yep, so as stated in your staff report there, um, stated in the planning commission bylaws is that capital improvement program be reviewed and recommended to the township board by the planning commission. Uh, so capital improvements, think physical equipment and physical infrastructure. Um, so included in your packet tonight are C I P requests from the fire department as well as Department of Public Works. Uh, Public Works just has the two at the end and the rest of the fire department. Um, some, several of these are similar, if not the same, from your pasts. Um, I mean, that is just kinda how it's dealt with, if it's not done, I mean, they just kinda roll over. Um, so tonight we would just be like for a recommendation to the township board that the C I P program as presented uh, be approved. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. I know Dan was here, uh, fire department head, Dan Shanahan was here, but uh, probably had to go on a call, so. Um, I, I know Lenny was unable to make it, Superintendent of Public Works, uh, so I'll try to answer any questions if you have them. Yeah, that's all I got on that.
Tablets that are used, are those like in the, the various engines, the, the vehicles? And like, are they navigation units? Do the calls come in through those, where they can see like locations where they're going?
Yes, as far as I know, it's mostly for navigation. Um, I'm pretty sure they're getting their calls through radios and cell phones. Um, but yeah, tablets would be for navigation. In response to, in response to emergency calls.
Very important for um, some of the rural areas that they have to go to. I know in our neighborhood, um, people get confused, I don't know what GPS does or whatever, but people say that uh, when they put in our address, they don't get to our house sometimes. They're driving around, so there's something weird that happens.
Well, your, your GPS in your car only is good for a couple of years, and then it doesn't, it'll take, yes. That's why your phone is always the, you know. Are these like individual tablets, or are they part of uh, are they integrated?
As far as I know, they would be individual tablets, think like an iPad. Exactly iPads at the beginning, but think like an iPad that's mounted in the, in the vehicle. Um, I do have a note about one of the fire department requests. I do remember, I think, two years ago when this was discussed, it was discussed, and here we go here, damn. Um, two years ago, it was discussed pretty uh, almost heatedly with uh, um, the past, past board, uh, but the two thousand square foot garage, heated garage. Um, that it is important to note that that would be used by the township in general for storage rather than just fire department use. So that's more. So that's more of a multi-department, um, storage building garage than it is just a fire department garage. And Chief, Chief Dan Shanahan is here again now, so he can answer questions if.
I told Eric I'd be here, so. Just in case. Oh, I've looked at all of them, you know, I, I don't have any problem with any of them, but there's one of them that really caught my attention. And that's, uh, oh, I guess it's, you know, the third page, and this is the water source for County Road Five Fifty. Uh, because there's, uh, no reliable water source north of, uh, Partridge Bay Trail. And that means that people living, for example, uh, well, I live on Eagles Nest Road. Uh, there's been four new houses that have been built this year already. If you count the houses, the homes on Eagle, Eagle, Eagles Nest Road, Buck Road, Harlow Lake Shores, uh, some other scattered ones on the other side, or, uh, before Sugarloaf. But then going farther north, uh, past Eagles Nest Road, uh, up until you get to the border of Powell Township, there's over a hundred homes there. And, uh, I, for some reason, I guess it's because I'm a PAC rat, I kept the, uh, minutes for the, uh, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting, uh, where we, uh, considered CIP. And, uh, I brought up at that meeting, and, and, and in order to be as accurate as, as I could on this, I went back and looked at the YouTube video of the, of the, uh, uh, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting. And we had a sense of discussion on this, I brought the same topic up then. Um, and I mentioned that, uh, there had been one home, uh, in, uh, Harlow, Harlow Lake Shores that had burned down, I don't know whether that was because of lack of water or they didn't get there in time or what. But anyway, as we go into, we see we're getting drier summers now, and so you have a fire hazard that seems to be increasing. So anyway, at the time, uh, last year, I mentioned that this item for this water source up on County Road Five Fifty had been on the CIP for at least the last four or five years. And so I just, I just said, well, you know, why don't we, uh, just, and it was at fifty thousand dollars last year, and I don't think it was, it wasn't described as a, uh, as a desirable as it is now, um, it was down, further down the peg, um. So I, I suggested that, um, okay, well, let's not try to take a bite and recommend, uh, you know, the whole fifty thousand at one time, let's just say, let's ask the county or the township board to set aside ten thousand dollars a year for the next five years to establish a fifty thousand dollar fund, which as Jim had pointed out last year, would never be enough to cover this, the cost of this, but it would at least be something to so-called, so, uh, in a way, prime the pump for any kind of grant. And I think, uh, Jason had mentioned that potential grant sources might be the, the, uh, indigenous, uh, uh, KIP or some indigenous group fund, and also FEMA perhaps. And so we have, we had a lot of discussion on it, and we eventually, and there was all five of us present at that time, your predecessor, Lee, and, uh, Steve Hakenin was sitting there, and yours said no. So we, uh, after some parliamentary rigmarole, we took a vote, it was unanimous to approve, or to, we took a vote unanimously to recommend to the township board that the township board set aside ten thousand dollars a year. So we would gradually build up a fund to perhaps maybe help buy a little parcel of land where they could drill a well or, or build a, a tank or something. And it passed unanimously. And, uh, I went to the, uh, I went to the budget meeting, which was on November eighth of last year, and I made a presentation to the township board, and Chief Shanahan was there, and there was some discussion, and if I'm not, I'm not trying to rewrite history here, but I think you, you've, you acknowledged it was a good idea, but that, you know, maybe there could be some other way of covering it, but it, it wasn't one of your priorities last year that you argued for at the township board, which was fine, I respect your opinion. And in any event, the township board did not fund it, but now this year, I see that it's been raised up to the desirable level, and there's an additional fifteen thousand added for it. So, uh, you know, I'm wondering, I mean, I, I guess I could make a motion that we recommend that the township set aside fifteen thousand dollars a year for the next five years to reach the seventy-five thousand dollar level to at least as seed money for some kind of, uh, water source in that neighborhood, because the nearest you have now is, uh, half, uh, north of Half, uh, Half Day Village. And that's a volunteer sort of fire department from, all the, comes from all the way from Big Bay, so, uh, I don't know. Does anybody remember this?
I remember.
Yeah, and, and I know, I mean, the few are, if you wanna talk about this, I mean.
Yeah, I don't, um, it's, it's really, it's been on the fire department's list for quite many years, many, many years. Uh, very expensive, the land is a, is a big issue, and actually, we need help, and I, and I've reached out to Eagle and the DNR. Um, and they said, land, and, and where, where are we gonna get the water from? That's where we discussed the tank, and that's where it was fifty thousand, just say four years ago, I think that was repeated even last year or the year before. Realistically, for that tank alone, we're looking at seventy, closer to seventy-five. Where do we put it? We had not discussed maintaining it.
Do you drill a well?
Line it out.
Pardon me, do you drill a well or what?
No, we were, we were hoping to just put, we were, you have to do a, I was hoping just to put a tank in, and then we would refill it after we needed, you know, if we needed it, the well would have just been operated. Put the tank in and then refill it, but we used it. We need to plow it, there are two, water out of the tank, and then maintenance, it's a big thing. Just gonna plow it, just gonna keep the, you know.
Well, I mean.
It's something we need, but we did, and we did, and this, yeah, well, I mean, I think you were at a meeting, I think you were at a meeting, I think it was a board meeting, and we had discussed, we, we had, um, got a tanker task force together strictly for that area.
Oh, okay.
And we did that this summer, and we even trained it, we only got to train at, uh, Wetmore's Landing. We wanted to go up to Eagles Nest where the, um, you know, that, that wetlands is right there, that park.
Eagle, the Superior Watershed Partnership.
Thank you. We were denied to train there, so the next public place we could go was at Wetmore. And we, we can get you ten thousand water, ten thousand gallons of water pretty quick.
Out of the lake?
No, that's bringing it just with our task force, we'll have ten thousand gallons of water there pretty quick.
Okay.
You know, just about as quick as we're gonna get there, we're gonna have our mutually aid townships meeting and say, we did it, we did a trial run, everybody was at their station, we got a paged, everybody got paged out. And, uh, we were fast, and then we showed water, and with our system, we're doing a little bit, not putting the pool down, if you will, if you're from the city, or a drop tank, um, we're just relay pumping with some different types of hose and connections. And we're gonna get ten thousand water, and once you've hit ten thousand gallons of water, after that, that's a lot, I'll just say it's a lot of water, and after that, I guess you can imagine, it, it's not gonna be good anyway for your home or for your structure. So, initial ten thousand, that's a lot of water.
So, I mean, we just asked you, you know.
No, go ahead, yeah.
It's on the CIP thing.
It's there because I, I would like, I, I asked it, honestly, a couple of years ago, I almost said, we might as well take it off, 'cause I don't know, I, 'cause I don't know what to do, I, I really don't, and I've reached out to everybody that I know. And that sounds like a good number, but the land and where is the issue? Um, I always used, I used to sit just north of, uh, Partridge Bay Trail, would have been okay.
Well, I mean, uh, would it be of any benefit to you, even if it doesn't? Even if it doesn't pass the township board's budget, would it be a, a benefit for you for us to somehow emphasize that as a need, or you just, we just?
No, I think it, it's a need, and even the county realizes that, and unfortunately, every time they've had a webinar or a meeting, maybe, it might, no, maybe not, the county planner actually is, um, trying to get all the fire departments together. They know there's an issue with dry hydrants in this county, and with, like you said, the dry summers. Um, they're, they're, they are working, the county itself is working on grants, I believe, to try and help out the communities with dry hydrants. So there, there is a need, that's why I sort of leave, leave it on there because I don't want it forgotten.
Okay, so you don't.
But I think we're in pretty good shape right, because we've, because we don't have, we had to do something, we, we did something, so we have five townships coming with at least ten thousand gallons of water right away. And they would have bypassed that tank or that, um, dry hydrant to begin with anyway. Then after we get that, that's a lot of water for a home, and once you get past that point, that means it's, it's pretty well involved.
So just, just to simplify things, if, if after discussion and review of the other things on the CIP thing, we just, uh, as we do every year, just make, make a motion to recommend the CIP program, including this as, as you have presented it, would that be satisfactory to you?
It is, and I understand your point, I really, really do, and that's why we really, that's why it's been on the, on the department's list for many, I'll just say many, many years, as long as I've been there. And it's been on the CIP now for five or six years, so it's a need, but we never had these, this, these communities involvement before, we used to, Marquette Township, City's Marquette City, now we work together. You know, we, we get paged, we all get paged at the same time, we're all going to North Eagles Nest wherever it may be. So those things have changed, where before it was, you know, just Marquette Townships going, and it was really needed. And just recently, we added these, these tanker task forces, if you will.
So as far as the CIP thing, this way it's set out here, if it was approved as is, that would be satisfactory to you?
Yeah, I mean, it's some, I, I guess, I'm, I'm looking for help too, to be honest with you, and I'm hoping the county, and I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman's name, the county planner.
Is it Smith? I think he might be more recreative.
Yeah, and I know he's working, there is a need, and that's why more of these townships are doing this tanker shuttle task force and maybe those types of things. But, um, it, it would be nice, I don't know, I just don't know the, I don't know how it's gonna, I really, I don't.
Maybe to.
Reach out to Eagle, and like I said, the DNR, Pete Glover's been great, um, and there is a concern with the dry summers, but we're, we're fortunate.
Answer your question a little bit more directly, Danny, if we, if you recommend requests as presented tonight, I think that reiterates to the board, it's still an issue that there's no water source. And it's included in the CIP requests, um, we can, as a planning commission, make it, if we do feel more strongly about it, we can make it more known to the board, either by staff relaying information or motions at future meetings or something like that, but, but just recommending what is before you tonight, being that the water source issue is included, and I think it reiterates to the board, hey, this is still an issue.
So. One, one more thing, I, as I was reviewing this YouTube tape tonight, uh, Jason, uh, said basically what you have just said, but he said, let's get it into our master plan. So I don't know where that fits in with what we've, it's been so long since we've done anything with the master plan, I kinda forget where, uh, services are in the master plan, but I don't know whether that's an option or not, but anyway, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with just proving it as is. But I appreciate, uh, your, uh, comments.
And I understand your concerns, I do, and we have other, we've, we've seen other calls too, especially with the dry summers and what's happened out in California and places, we have concern.
Do you remember, do you remember, uh, Dr. Hanky's?
Yes, I do, I was there.
Okay, and was it because of lack of water that it burned out?
I was there, um, I re, I remember that fire very well, it, no.
Okay.
I'll be hon, um, it was water, I will give you that water would have, but it was already gone.
You got there too late.
We got there too late, and it's too far, and there's, they need to call right away. You know, if you've got a little barbecue fire, you're so far away, call the fire, call. It's a little barbecue fire, and I think that's, might have been what's, might have been what started, I'm not sure, might have been what started that one. Dry handling himself, then by the time he called, the, the garage was fully involved, super windy day, evening. So, and the, as you know, wind and everything else, but, yeah, but do, I mean, that's what, recommend everybody that, you know, call right away. You can always gas, I say, I put it out with my dirt, it is coming, you know. Like, do you remember that one?
Sorry, go ahead, Tom.
How many tanker trucks, uh, does the township have?
Marquette Township has one.
How many gallons is that?
That's only two thousand.
So the other townships that respond, they have like the same?
Chocley will come with a two and a three, that's, they have five thousand. Um, Agony Township will come with a three thousand, Agony City will come with a one thousand, all the township will come with a two thousand. So that's, I mean, that's a lot of water, and we're all getting there pretty much the same time, where twenty-four years ago, or whenever that one was, um, it was Marquette Township, and we did ask for Powell later.
So if you ever put a tank up, how many gallons would it?
I, I, I think I'd like it to be thirty, I mean, thirty. And the prices, you know, everything's going up, I know I had last year, I think still had fifty thousand, this year I put up to seventy-five, price of tanks have gone up, everything's going up.
So if you had the tank there, do, how, how would you get the water out of it to the fire?
We, we'd either have the pump, I'd like, ideally, we'd have a pump right there, have a little hut, build a little hut for it, and have a pump right there. Otherwise, we'd have to draft, just like we did, like, I don't know, dry hydrant or a pool, you know, type of thing.
You'd refill your tanker, basically, is what.
Correct, yeah, yep.
So you'd still need all the trucks to go there, but I guess kinda seems like the tank wouldn't really be worth it, if you're already getting all these tanks, tankers coming with all this water right now, you're not gonna go and refill them because the places are all gonna be burnt down, right?
Well, we still, if, if it's, I, you know, when you live far, it's just, it's a little bit harder, but no, of course, and that's what we did that night, when we did our training up there at Wetmore's, the parking lot, actually, on, uh, a side, and we did, and that's exactly what we did, we gave up their ten thousand gallons of water, that's a lot of water, it really is. And then we had them shuttle back, all the way back to Northern's, um, hydrant. It was a city hydrant, and, um, we were delayed, and we got stopped by the train that night, and we were delayed, I think, three minutes, we were without, without a club on, and we were pumping a lot of water, we were using our deck, you know, our, our ladder truck and everything. We were pumping a lot of water.
Well, the, when all the tanker trucks got there, do they all start pumping the water at once?
No, what we're, what we're doing now, instead of just, it depends on driveways, there's a lot of variables, but, um, we're using, they're called flapper valves, they're hooked up right, they can, a couple of them will be hooked up. There'll be your primary truck, you know, spraying water in the house, and there'll be a tanker truck, and then there'll be another tanker truck. So there's six thousand gallons of water roughly right there, and they're just sitting there waiting, as soon as that, remember, the primary truck goes down the water, that second truck, he doesn't, they're already connected, it goes, it's just continuous. And we just rotate.
Does the first truck leave and go back and get more water?
First truck will not leave.
No.
First, right. Well, the first truck will stay there, 'cause he'll be.
If it's empty?
Correct, because they were all, the other trucks will be refilling them, yeah, and we won't send, our tanker truck will not be the first truck up there. It'll be an engine pumping truck, if you will. So that truck only has seven hundred and fifty gallons of water, and all the rest of the trucks will be but it's initial, if you, those first five, that's, it's, it's the initial, is what, what puts out fires. If you can, you know, and that night, I know, I remember, it was very windy that night too. I remember the waves, we're trying to get, get a pump out in the lake, and it was windy, yeah. It's that initial that's so critical. It's that initial that's so critical. And then it is afterwards, you know, for brush fires is why I think the county's looking so hard right now too. Even though we're we're fortunate with the woods we have, the type of wood we have up this way compared to Southern County, Western County.
Yeah, I'm talking about the county's efforts, I'm recalling some stuff right now. It's, I'm pretty sure it's part of the county master or the county hazard mitigation plan, they need to update it. It's just kind of like our master plan, we need to update every five years, they need to update their hazard mitigation plan. And I think a significant component of that or an emphasis in that plan is wildfire mitigation.
Yep.
So that's where that planning process comes in. So I can reach out to the county to get more information on that if you want and follow up at a future meeting or with an email or something.
Is it legal to water on the lake to pump it out of their own little fire?
Yes.
Okay, so is that possible, if you get throughout the house that's right along the way, to go and put some kind of a pump in there?
It, I, you know, that's, I, in the perfect scenario, you get, but how often is the lake, you know, flat? Because that night, you guys said we did try and do that, but I'm gonna, even, you know, with those three foot little rollers coming in.
Yeah. How much depth do you need to put the pump into?
That's about all we'd need. There's a screen on it that floats, but if it's doing, that's just, yeah, yeah. Idea, if you've got nice flat water or something.
You get somebody out there to sit on it?
I know, I know, it was fall, I think, without, I think that was fall, it was a little cold.
Thank you.
And then to kind of answer your comment about the master plan. As Jason said, making it an emphasis, the master plan. Obviously, before you tonight is chapters one through four, I just kind of glanced through it, it's not mentioned in there because I don't think it is applicable to mention it in the first four chapters. But as we move through that process, we can make sure that it's included.
There's a, there's a section regarding services?
Yes, yeah, and if, again, if it's not mentioned, we can, we can get it in there because we haven't, we haven't approved the master plan yet, so.
I was just kind of curious on the heated, two thousand square foot heated garage.
Yes, well, I I I, that's, I, we had a little meeting today, actually.
That kind of took me back a little bit when I.
I I bet it did, and because a couple of years ago, we had three hundred, and there are two seven fifty or two seventy-five a few years ago. And this is, it's not for, and that's why I stressed in this meeting this morning, I go, it's not for, and I know you know that. I wanted to stress that, I go, I wish, and I go, I'm not, I did numbers a few years ago for what the fire department needed. And then I know other people needs, and then I go, well, I guess I'll add this much, a square footage. You know, with somebody, fifty dollars a square foot or wherever it was, seventy-five dollars a square foot. And that's why it got added, and it's two thousand square feet, but the building would be at the fire depart, you know. That little bit, piece of property we have there. And so they were talking, I think expenses too, because they might have to go up, get all the stores that they would like.
So it's gonna be a tall building, probably?
Could be, or it's built into that hill right behind the fire hall, sort of, you know, partially. I know it's, and that was the last meeting, it was due, and I said, my numbers I think are okay for what I want, for what the fire department needs. But I know prices have gone up a lot too. I said, well, how much do you need? And I just, I think it was seventy-five dollars a foot, I don't remember. And then the tablets, I'll just say real quick too, I know there's, last year was twenty-some thousand, this year's thirty-five. They've gone up, we need more, and we are, we've applied for the grant and we're hopeful here by December on our tablets for the trucks. Because they're eight, nine years old, they're starting to fail now.
And there, there was a question, those tablets, you use them for navigation, correct?
We use them for navigation and the, a little bit for navigation, pretty much we, well, us people, people have been around a while. Know, pretty much know where we're going, but they're also, all of our notes, especially in EMS and fire also, our notes are in there. If people in scanner, in scanners, people with scanners can hear everything that's being said on the dispatch radio. But what they can also do is if it's something that they'd rather not broadcast or, they just put notes in there and we can read the notes of what the caller is saying without them having to be on the radio for two minutes saying, well, you know, what their issues are or how the fire's going or where it's at or people there. There's notes that we get, CAD notes they call them, so that, that's a big part of it. It it tracks everything, it's an AVL too, everybody knows where we are. It is, everybody's using them now. They're very nice, but ours are eight or nine years old and we're hoping for a grant, I mean, that's a high, it's becoming a high priority. Ours is failing right now, and just the equipment, the routers, I'm not a IT person, but routers and modems are starting to get outdated also. So that's why that price jumped up a little bit from last year. Quite a bit, really, and we're hoping to get a grant.
Yeah, and the the um, the side by side four wheeler, the Argo. You know, the note in here, mechanics and parts are getting hard to find. That's very true, if you have an older piece of equipment, local prices, the majority of them will not even work on them. We, as I personally run into that and then trying to find parts or whatever, so, yeah.
No, that's, yeah, we've been fortunate with the Argo, that was on a grant, I think in ninety, I think I only put twenty. I can't remember how many years I put, how old it was, twenty-two or something. I believe it's a few years older than that, a couple of years older than that, yeah, and the only place that we know around here that we're working, I think they're leaving is, I'm sure. They would work on that for us and they had two, us two winters. It's for, it's done its job for twenty-five, it's just, I just, I don't care, I remember how I rated that one. Um, I know it's.
Acceptable, so I was, yeah.
It's needed, I mean, we do, because we do a lot of stuff, a lot of rescue or those type of things in the, in the woods. And then we can, for wildland fires too, it would come in handy. Our train isn't, is different than South Market County, but we still start helping all that stuff in there. You know, the guys are tired when they get there, you know, so. That's why, that's, it's, it's served its purpose for all these years.
Eric Carl, these are all the requests from all the different departments, are they just fire and other?
Other ones.
Are there gonna be more next week from the other departments?
As far as I know, no.
All the requests? Doesn't it have any this year for? What are grinders, actually?
That's what grinds up solid base to get into the, into the pipes, to put simply, as I understand it. I'd be a question for, I need to answer with more detail, but yeah. I mean, the, the office is getting calls all the time about area pumps failing or they need to be replaced or part of the plays, so.
Or drive-through township then?
Right, I mean, if you live in the township, you might know better than me, but Rover, every, Rover, every property, Rover has one, right?
I think it's this side of Ontario. Pretty much.
So you want a motion that we agree on all this and, you know, if we need to, or kind of accept it or?
Yeah, I mean, a motion, I'm sure that the, I think, the township board that they adopt.
Yeah, I think we did that last, last year, we made a motion to.
If anybody wants to do it, or unless you have more questions or comments?
I need a motion that we approve the, or, is it a recommendation for the township board? A recommendation for the township board?
To adopt.
Adopt the capital improvements that were submitted tonight by the fire department and also the public works department. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No unfinished business, correspondence, market charter township master plan, update draft sections one to four.
Yep, so at your, it was not in your package, just because of the amount of paper, but at your, at your spot tonight. Our chapter one through four draft of the master plan. Excuse me, um, so I mean, we can talk about it a little bit right now, but hopefully this is more so kind of homework for you to take and read over the next couple of weeks. Um, I think at the next meeting, we plan to have at least five and six before you. Uh, this is one through four, we have in hand, I think, one through eight or nine. So as they've come in, Jason and I have both been going through kind of with a fine tooth comb to make sure stuff is correct and grammar and all that stuff, so I'd encourage you to read through it yourself. Uh, and you can either email Jason or me with any changes, edits, additions, things like that, or bring it to the next meeting. Um, and we can kind of go from there, so.
Does, does everybody have a copy of last year's master plan? I don't know if it's last year's, but.
I think it's in our, I think it's in our binders.
I have a copy.
Should be on the binder and it's also, I think, it.
Online.
Gotta be posted online, yeah, and if it's not, that's a, let me know.
I think it's right up there.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
Any comments, questions?
I think it's a good idea to just take it all, study it up.
It'll just be on the agenda for?
Yeah, it it's gonna be a placeholder type of agenda item for the next, next few meetings at least, so.
Any idea when we're gonna get the other sections coming in?
So, well, and I've, I should have maybe printed out the outline as they proposed it, just to make. So we know how many sections there are, I want to say there's twelve or thirteen. So like I said, we've got eight in hand, at least, maybe even nine. Uh, we'll get at least two more to you next meeting and then kind of piecemeal it from there. I mean, if we don't want to overload you with too much or all at one time, so.
Is it just me or are they like, have they fallen way behind and getting?
They, over the summer, they were a little behind, some internal staffing issues on their end, but we're kind of getting back up to that timeline. Jason and I are confident that we're, that we'll meet it, so.
Township board report? I guess we're not gonna get one tonight. Uh, rec, report?
They did not meet last week just because they didn't have any, any business, so they will meet. I think I reported the same thing last meeting, but they will meet soon to discuss the applicable master plan chapters.
What can we do?
Not sure why that's on there, um, because that does not exist anymore.
That's what I thought. But maybe got into something. Um, planning zoning report?
Um, I'm trying to think of any new updates since our last meeting just two weeks ago. Uh, I don't know if Jersey Mikes was public at that time, that news, so Jersey Mikes will be moving into the space between Duncan and Verizon. Site plan was approved, well, not site plan because it's already an existing building, but the interior, they're doing some interior work. Um, so that was approved by our planning zoning, public works and fire department.
They just want to get a drive-through back there?
No, no, there's no drive-through proposed, um. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's always been kind of a small concern of ours too, is the the parking and kind of like, like Contror was saying, those first few weeks there are gonna be quite busy, but I think it'll kind of all alleviate by itself, hopefully. Um, and if it is a constant issue, that's something we can address when that comes up, so. Again, I'm trying to think of any other development news. Nothing's really coming to mind at this point. There is, I'll talk about the handout that was in front of you from Eagle. That's for the Michigan Coastal Management Program, their annual grant. Program, I attended a webinar of theirs this week. Marquette Township is one of those coastal communities in Michigan, so this program's only for basically communities that are along Lake coastline. Danny, if you don't have one, you can just take this one, I got mixtures in my office. So this handout, uh, just kind of goes over the program, like I said, I attended a webinar for it, so just to kind of get on their radar that we may be interested. Um, I don't have any specific projects in mind yet, but if you do, I think it's on the backside of the first page, kind of goes over the eligible projects. It is a very wide-ranging spectrum that the funding can be applied to. Uh, so planning, uh, looking at some of the grant awards from last year, some communities were using it for master planning and there's others that were using it to put in like boardwalks for public beach access and there was others that were, uh, using it for land acquisition. So I mean, it's a wide range of eligible projects, so I'd encourage you to read over that handout, just to give you some more homework. Read over that handout, uh, maybe brainstorm some ideas, like I said, I've been trying to, Jason and I have tried to been coming up with something. Uh, partnering with a local organization like Superior Watership Partnership or similar, might be a good move. Uh, I haven't reached out to them on that yet. This is something I could bring to like the climate action task force, maybe find some partnerships there. Um, so again, I've been trying to brainstorm grant, application deadline is the end of the year, December thirty-first. So there's a little bit of time to figure it out, kind of a short timeframe, but when they're just doing the webinar for it just this week. Um, I think everybody's kind of on that timeframe, so. Uh, encourage you to read it over and let me know if you got any ideas, so. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, I did mention this right at the beginning, that I had some photos. Uh, but so this is seven, six, zero Lake Enchantment, uh, kind of before and after. Uh, not a great angle on this one, it's kind of a rise up to a big flat spot that had a bunch of junk, um, so there's, just cleared out. Again, just before and after, on the left was, I think, Monday of last week and then on the right is Tuesday afternoon. So contractor did all the work in a day and a half, I was out there over the course of that two days, about, I think, three times or four times just to monitor work and do with the property owners, the property owner occupant. Um, that is responsible for the junk is currently in jail, uh, so he was not on site at the time. But, yeah, so.
Correct that the cost of this will be applied as a lien to the property tax bill?
So. So this is at the very end of the dirt road going in, you can see the structure through the trees on the left, that is a separate property. And then there's a structure through the trees which you can see in, this house is the one on seven, six, zero. You can see that through the trees, just kind of a little bit of the shed roof. This image on the right, kind of the shed style roof right there, you can see it, that car was covered, um, so we left that one. Yeah, it's a night and day difference. Uh, contractor said they removed nine trailer loads of junk, seven vehicles, six motorcycles, couple of refrigerators, a downed tree, over eighty tires and a pile of scrap metal.
Partridge in a pear tree.
Yes, so, I mean, it was, again, night and day difference compared to past cleanup efforts like this at the property. Past cleanup efforts were much more piecemeal. Past cleanup efforts were much more piecemeal, uh, being that the property owner was there, so we were trying to work with him. And he was telling us, yes, you can take that, no, you can't take that, I wanna keep it, I'm gonna put it away. Never got put away, that type of thing. So again, this time, not to say we took advantage of him, I mean, he's had plenty of chances to get it cleaned up and the fact that he was away from the property, um, made it much more straightforward as far as the cleanup process.
You have any idea what the cost was?
Original bid, um, original bid was forty-seven fifteen. And just.
Forty-seven thousand?
Four thousand seven hundred fifteen.
Oh, my God.
Yes, I'll be clear. And after the work was done, just the sheer amount of junk, just kinda, that bid was a little bit under what actual work was done. And so I think, uh, an additional bid was submitted for nineteen hundred dollars, so it came in around about sixty-six hundred for the cleanup. And we were pleased that we used the same contractor, contractor that we've used in the past. And in the past, he was a little hesitant to deal with the, or the vehicles, because you gotta go through the title abandonment process and things like that. But he did that for us this time. He worked with the towing company, um, which was, that was very welcome, um, from staff's perspective, uh, to not have to deal with that process for the nine vehicles on the property, so.
Yeah, it sure looks a lot better. Absolutely.
And for a property that's as out of the way as this one is, I mean, not a lot of people are gonna see it, but, I mean, it is, it is still, I think, nice to see it cleaned up like it is, so. And I know, and I'm glad to hear that Steve is happy too, so.
Yeah, they're, they're both thrilled. Steve and Kay are very happy that this is done.
So this is down the hill by that pond. That's where it's at. The lake, um, the left of the pond. Can't see it from.
It's more towards the lake.
Even though, um, if, uh, malt manufacturing, if that property's for sale yet?
I do not. Um, I do know they own that property on Brookton, so I don't know what they're, I assume they would.
They're gonna sell it.
Right, yeah. Um, I don't know where they're at with that. Obviously with their approval for the best by building, they can kinda move forward with moving into there. So I would suspect that that Brooklyn property would be put up for sale soon, but I don't know the way it's on it.
I guess I kinda thought it might be kind of a good thing for nine oh six to look at maybe purchasing ads since, I mean, they've kinda run out of space there with what they have and, you know, right across the street, they're like that for another warehouse or for all their supplies that they have to keep outside.
Yeah, I'm sure they're, I'm sure they would probably be interested now.
Any else for planning and zoning? Yes, I, um, Linda made a good comment last meeting as we were talking about the potential amendments regarding wetland protection. And her comment was, we only, at that time, we only had three meetings. Now we're down to, we only have two meetings for the rest of the year, one in November, one in December. So I know you're, you're busy, but you're the guy who's, you seem like you're on top of that whole body of information. We've, I've submitted some stuff to you, so, um, is it possible, uh, do you think, you know, feasible for you to have a package for us before the end of the year at one, at either next meeting or December?
Certainly aim for that, yeah.
Okay, that'll be good.
Just didn't have the time between last meeting and now, but I know we had talked about it, that it probably wouldn't be on this agenda. Uh, but yeah, we could definitely shoot before the end of the year.
That'd be great. What were you asking? Wetland amendments, we, we all agreed upon last time that, and we were asking Eric to put them into a forum that we could vote on to recommend to the township and Linda pointed out that, you know, now this was one of the three meetings and then November, December, we'd have one meeting each month, so we get something done before the end of the year.
I think between now and the first, check the calendar. So between now and the November meeting, we have three weeks, just the way the days fall, because it's the second and fourth Wednesdays. So yeah, there's a little bit more time in between this meeting and the next than there was between the past meeting and this one. So I could probably get something. If not, again, if not the next one, certainly in the December meeting.
Is there, um, has the Renovari project, has that deal actually, a real estate deal actually closed? Have the documents been signed and the property been turned over to them? Okay, and I ask about this because that road, that service road behind those buildings is used constantly and it alleviates so much traffic that otherwise would pull out, have to pull out onto forty-one and then back on to four ninety-two there to, to go back up, um, to, um, or go down on Brookton or go up on four ninety-two. And, um, you know, I just, I'm waiting for that road to be closed, I guess. I don't look forward to that. And I think it's gonna be a, you know, real hardship for a lot, there's a lot of traffic on that little road. So I'm just curious.
Didn't, uh, Lynn, I think, I thought Lynn said it would be, based on her comments at the last meeting, something would happen within this month? That the closing was gonna happen?
Yeah, it was just a matter of, um, like e-documents being sent for signature or whatever, needs and stuff.
And did they, um, I thought, wasn't there a discussion that they were gonna start doing some land clearing before the snowfall?
After the closing?
After the closing, yes, right, that's what I thought too, yeah.
I don't think it's closed or, or, or something.
Yeah.
I'm just worried, I don't.
Yeah, that whole one is not the one that I've really been, I mean, I was at the beginning when we were going over the planning and zoning requirements, but since then, I haven't really been privy to those conversations, so.
Anything else, Eric?
Next meeting, November twelfth.
Any public comment? Our two attendees. All right. Additional comments by our planning commissioners?
We're all good.
Okay. Adjourned at eight eighteen.